I'd like to invite Pastor David Watson, the Archbishop of Cheltenham, to open proceedings.
Father God, we thank you for everybody standing in the room here at Gistair Service for this community. We thank you for the Alderman, we thank you for the officers of the council here. We ask for your blessing and your favour on the meeting tonight, we ask for your wisdom. We also commit this community to you, we thank you that we're blessed and privileged to live in an amazing part of the world. And with stuff you continue to work in this community and the things that happen here tonight would continue to grow and build this region. You're mighty, ain't it?
The court setting up by the policy that maintains our regional community is heading the traditional custodians to land in the meeting on the night. I respect the Lord's presence in the present, which is mine, and will be available on our website, page on the screen. Third meeting open, the notice of apology for Alderman's farm. Item two, confirmation minister, 27, Miami, special. Ladies, I would like to invite Alderman Vertosh, who has been represented by the council, for the certain award.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Australian Coastal Councils Association Conference in Queensland, Redcliffe, in May of this year. And we actually received an award, and it was the annual achievement award. And it was for our adaptation pathway and the lessons learned. And myself, Alderman McFarlane, and Phil Watson were there to actually receive it, but I'd like to formally present it to council.
In accordance with notice given, no move that council approved the removal of the tree from council's nature strip adjacent to the dwelling at one Tenundle Street, excuse me, in Harrow. This has a check in history, Mr. Mayor, and that is that you'll note that I have enclosed a copy of the response to the Alderman's request, and that's dated the 2nd of May 2017. Prior to that, I was approached by a person who actually is the owner of one Tenundle Street, expressing concern with regard to the tree and also their concern about the, well, the basis of which the front of their dwelling is actually concealed. And there is also some concern on their part in relation to security from the family's perspective. In the council's response of the 2nd of May, it says, and I quote, "Council has once again employed independent arborists to inspect the tree, and the assessment is the tree has a future life expectancy of 10 to 15 years, and any further trimming of the tree would increase the likelihood of storm damage." And quote, "And further, no action on this was recommended by the arborist." So having said that, I met on a Sunday morning with Tanya Smith, and we discussed her concerns and her family's concerns with regard to the tree. And in her letter, which I have circulated a copy this evening, dated the 8th of June, I'm sure everybody has read that, it states, and I'm quoting now from point one of the letter of the 8th of June, "This tree creates a major security risk to myself and my family as it conceals the front and the front of my home, particularly my front door, allowing possible unwarranted behaviour, especially at night." End quote. So in other words, the tree is a major concern of the family. I might add that this is the only tree that in fact is of this size and nature in Tenundle Street. And notwithstanding that, it would appear that it is, or basically covers the front of the property and the attachments bear witness to that. I seek council's support for the removal of the tree.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite often, Mayor, I'd go through the process that council does. But when I looked at the photos of this tree, I went round and had a look myself. And I totally agree with what Alderman James said. For one, and I hate to say this if you say trees, but it's a damn ugly tree. It's in a very bad position. I totally agree with what Tanya Smith said. It completely blocks security of that house, which also worries me. Now, why does it worry me? Because I was our neighbour, the very first neighbourhood watch in Tasmania. So we look for things like this in neighbourhood watch. Now, here's the person that's concerned with a tree that's on our nature strip, that's blocking the view of her house. To me, it's a risk. To me, it's a damn ugly tree. Now, I can understand the arborist saying all this, and it could be done this way and it could be done that way. But sometimes you've just got to use some common sense. And in this case, all right, we've got to process, but now, if you wouldn't have had a look at it, you'd say to remove the tree is the right thing to do for this person. And I totally agree with this motion that it should be removed.
Mr. Mayor, it's just come to attention that the person affected is known to me, and I'm going to declare an interest and send myself.
Mr. Mayor, when I first came to council, we actually had the situation where Alderman could bring issues of concern in relation to a tree to a council meeting through motion on notice, as has been done tonight. This created some issues, and that was actually addressed in the tree policies that were developed. And that tree policy has subsequently been reviewed. And the important aspect is, for me, in relation to this matter, is that there is actually a policy that has a clear process in relation to residents having concerns about trees. And as has actually been noted in the response to Alderman James' Alderman request, it's noted by Mr. Graham, the acting manager of Asset Management, that the resident can actually apply through the proper process to have this tree removed. In doing so, not only is the arborist's report considered, but also surrounding neighbours are actually contacted, and also we actually look, the officers look at the issue from a holistic perspective. My concern is that if we start going outside of our policy and the process that we have, this may actually become that we are circumventing the requirements of the policy on a regular basis. And for that reason alone, I actually will not be supporting this motion. But I certainly suggest to the resident concerned that they apply. And they can apply online, or they can actually send an email to council, or they can come in and get a hard copy of the application form. And then it will be considered along with every other request that we get from residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was going to ask, reading this, it doesn't seem as though any application that complies with our policy has been received. Alderman Vertosh has clarified that. Alderman around the corner, Alderman Vertosh or Alderman James, but it seems a very reasonable request. However, I'm confused, as I say, I understand that there is a council policy with the set procedures that relates to removal of trees on council land. This includes, very importantly, local community consultation. I'm also very surprised that Alderman and Alderman James' experience would not be aware of this. And if so, why circumvent this? I think it is very unwise to circumvent, among other things in this instance, community consultation.
I have the resident's letter before me, and all of those factors are quite clear. And one would have to concur that the tree should be removed based on that. But I'm confused, just like Alderman Cusick, because I can't understand why the Alderman's request and the answer that was provided on the 2nd of May and the instruction that was given in that was not abided by. I'm confused, because this puts us in a position of not wanting to set a precedent because the former policy was just like this, but it's been amended, it's been made quite clear. And so I'd like to see if there is a reason why it hasn't gone. Because it doesn't, even though an arborist can say that it's safe and it's going to last 10 years, that still doesn't mean the tree won't be removed based on council's decision. So that's the thing that I'm quite confused about. And I don't quite understand when we do have Alderman's request and we get responses, that we then go and override that response and go, well, I'll do another request. Or I'll put a motion for it and I won't abide by the response that council's given. That's my dilemma.
I'd add, in this stage, while maybe a subsequent case for the tree should be removed, I am concerned that going outside the policy runs the risk of taking us back to where we were a few years ago, whereby every council meeting involved two or three requests for new trees, and we approached the whole thing in a very much in a double manner. So we landed on this policy, which means we're dealing with the vague result.
Perhaps more questions than I'll speak, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering, maybe through, if Mr. Graham could just run through what the actual current procedural avenue is available, just actually spell that out in a succinct fashion at this stage in this case.
For you, Mr. Mayor. So as mentioned before, the applicant can make at no cost an application. Then a consultation to adjacent neighbours where they have the ability to make a comment whether they agree or disagree. We'll have the arborist to go and have a look in terms of the life of the tree that's recommended be removed, or the stability issues or maintenance requirements. And then council officers will go through the report and consider on a risk base whether it should be removed, or are there other safety issues in terms of sightlines for motorists, people leaving the house, or for pedestrians as well. And then in accordance with our policy, we'll make a recommendation to council. And councils still have the ability to consider that even after council officers have made the decision as to whether accept or refuse.
Whilst that process does involve a degree of time, it's a process that could have been initiated a bit earlier than where we are now. It's a process that will allow for a decision with a greater degree of facts. If it gets down to just visceral sort of decisions, then my visceral decision on my gut would be cut it down. You know, I can empathise with the owner on that, on why they would have concerns. And then separate to those concerns, you know, I'm pretty sure that tree's encroaching in a quite a significant way from, if you like, council land into their property as well. I think there's a really strong case for it. I understand why the affected party may be disappointed with some of the way that we may vote on this tonight. And I'm voting against the notice of motion, not because viscerally I don't agree, but I think it makes eminent. You can just look at it and understand why that is, but the process is there for a reason. It will allow more accountable decision to be made in those cases where it might not be quite as obvious as this. And if we start the circumvention process, then we're back to where we are. So I'm voting against the motion, not necessarily voting against the intent or the desired outcome of it.
I know that it quite seems that we haven't gone through the due process, but if you look at the general manager's comments, it says the effect of the council managing trees on council land is ensuring that trees in high urban areas are regularly inspected for hazards that pose a risk to public safety. Ensure that trees are regularly routinely pruned. Well, this hasn't been pruned at all. Protecting utilities, enhancing public safety and urban amenity. So we haven't as a council even complied with our own policy. Removing lower branches to a height of, up to a height of three to five metres in order to clear, give clear pedestrian and traffic access. And some of them, look, that's just a joke. Those trees are actually on the branches on the ground, so we're not even applying our own policy to this tree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things have occurred in relation to this. And there has been a policy whereby it goes to adjoining neighbours, there is some discussion in relation to that. This particular residence is on a corner block, and there is a turning circle immediately to some left of the actual property in question. Council, I believe, has a role to play, and that is, in the case of exceptional circumstances, we can overrule, we can overrule our policy. And we've done that. We have done that on a number of occasions. Now, I'm saying that in this particular situation, there is a risk to the family, and this council is very, very concerned about its liability cover, insurance cover, in relation to its footpath, its standard of footpath, and even the trees for that matter. And the general manager has gone on to great lengths to spell out the risk associated with this and not necessarily go into the detail of whether or not the tree is healthy or otherwise. In the Alderman's request response, the future life expectancy of this tree is 10 to 15 years. So if you go through the process, you will end up, I believe, with the advice of the arborist for the tree not to be removed. Because it is stated in this memorandum that the tree has a future life expectancy of 10 to 15 years. And therefore, it will not be removed. So by going through this process of putting it to council and in these circumstances where there's so much risk associated, not only with passersby, but the family that are actually living in this property, I believe it's appropriate that we take this measure and have the tree removed. And it is sending a signal, and it's not necessarily setting a precedent. Because at the end of the day, we've got to weigh up the risk versus the actual future expectancy of the tree, any tree for that matter, and then it comes down to that. But when we're talking about risk to a family, and that is from intrusion from anybody in the community, and this is just a case of where it's going to happen if that tree is not removed, I seek council's support.
Notion is as traveled to Alderman James, all those in power, against. Notion's lost. I'm hoping that we're looking at a process to be favorable, or the tree won't be removed.
You've got to be three weeks down the way.
It's important to understand that our policy provides for council to oversee and recommend as well as the staff. Then if they do decide on a tender, and so I give it his wrong impact to the company, draw back discounts in the appropriate price. All the arborists said, the arborist said they have a final opinion on it. No one is taking it, but I think this right now is not being ignored. Item 10, it was announced by the authority. Authority of the Council, authority of the authority. The Court of Appeals, the person asked to be heard, the government. That's a weekly briefing. We're talking about the authority of the council, authority of the authority. All those in power, against, actually that's Gary Macister, the head of management. If you continue to interrupt the meeting, then I will actually formally force you to go down. We should take that part. Next item under the single two items, the authority is the publishing group is supposed to be on the table. I'll move the Court of Appeals, and I'll say that the twenty four reports may be brought out to the House of Commons.
Mayor, I have the minutes of the Business East Board of Management meeting for 11th of April and also for 9th of May, which was only just confirmed tonight for this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I have the minutes for the Clarence Stings and Citizen Centre for the 11th of April, 2017. And I'm sorry, I think this is the wrong section. I have the minutes for the Waste Strategies South meeting for the 22nd of May, 2017. Should that have been previous?
I've received a map, probably part of the issues matter.
Okay, the South Arm Master Plan, which is on page three. Council's decided to proceed with the tender for construction of the South, excuse me, Skate Park. And the mayor has circulated a letter to nearby residents. My question is in relation to that, and it's to Mr. Graham. Mr. Graham, has there been anything to sort of quell the unrest that has developed between a number of the residents backing on to proposed skate park and also the other group in the community who are quite determined in their desire to have it built in that location? Has there been any mediation? Has there been anything to actually allay their concerns in relation to this?
What I'm receiving is that we need to vary the current government application in relation to the hours of use. We'll require consideration or application of a discretionary development application. I've requested the stamp to go in the department preparing that. That could go on exhibition and would enable all Texas parties to have some say in that. We have a permit that provides a certain thing to commit that application, but if we want to vary the hours, it would require a discretionary application. Because what I wasn't apprised of earlier was that the, as a permit, you should comply with it.
Further, I've received one email following the letter that I sent down there, which referred to Alderman James.
Yes, further to the mayor's letter, Mr. Graham, of the 31st of May. Yeah, okay, okay. Through the mayor, through to Mr. Graham, in the mayor's letter of the 31st of May, he says, "To clarify concerns in relation to usage hours, a new discretionary planning application will be lodged seeking approval for usage of the facility during daylight hours." And then he goes on to say, "In limiting use of the facility during daylight hours, there will be no requirement for lighting other than standard security lighting at the facility." End quote. In what the general manager has said, there will be public consultation, will there not, in relation to this variation to the permit?
Well, Chris, I mean, a discretionary application by its very nature requires public consultation.
And does that mean that there won't be any process on the actual development of the skate park until that has been concluded? The process of consultation, or is it forced them ahead?
Probably my thinking ahead, my view is that it needs to be put on hold until we've considered that. Because if it's only usable from nine to five, as the current permit allows, if we don't get the other discretionary permit, then I've got to question the location and the use of it. I'll have information directly directed to you.
Can I ask questions and write a reply? Your letter to the residents, was that following the workshop discussion on the issue that had been circulated to Alderman? Okay, I must have missed it, then I'll, I'll try and look for it. Thank you.
Few Alderman around me are, are saying it's extremely cold in here and I'm not that warm myself. Is there any chance of any heat?
Very noisy, man. Yes, there are, the festival, we're getting ready for it. The nation's baby noted, all those in power. Barry, you know, it's a good year, uh, we're getting up here at two. Speaking of, uh, necessary planning authority, uh, then, uh, group, uh, one. This is not a case of eight and four, uh, send it. So, um, thank you, all of you.
I think it's a great use for a church, um, and I recommend the officers' report.
I'm totally encouraged because, uh, the effect that said, uh, places to encourage more extensive forms of sport, right? So that's what we wanted. And I think this is an ideal place for, for this. And in actual fact, I, I, if it wasn't so far away, I'd be down to the class, it's my soft name.
Any other speakers? No, pardon.
No, thank you.
Hold on, in five. Charity announcement. That's what's been considered, is, uh, enough applications. Well, yeah, thank you. Well, uh, shall we have a second?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll let the other speakers get to the floor soon. Um, the board stacks up and says why, why we should recommend it and we should just get on and do it.
It's, um, there has been some discussion with Dallas Enterprises, the consulting engineers, that are buts thirty, dumb bubbin, dumb baddin, dumb, as you were, dumb Barton.
Dumb.
Yeah, thanks. Um, and there is, um, has, has been some, um, not animosity, but there has been some sort of, uh, ire in relation to that shared access. That buts Dallas's holdings and, um, and this particular development. Is that, that has, it seems to have been resolved because Mr Love has sent a, a letter to the developer to advise that there has no problems with that shared access at thirty Dunbar. Uh, is this actually impinge upon that or is it part of that development? Or is it further removed into that cul-de-sac area? And therefore it doesn't actually impose any problems with that shared right way between Dallas and the developers?
I can do this, may I?
Do you have a speaker?
Uh, so, yeah, it, it seems so. We don't have a lot of, uh, uh, any alternative to this, uh, as, uh, by the officers. Um, I know there are ten representations, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of interest, uh, judging by the gallery that, well, a lot of opposition from people attending here, so I seek support.
Here, I must admit, this is one of the more complicated items that I've read in recent times. Uh, and I feel that the officers have actually provided us with a very succinct recommendation, particularly when you look at the issue. I'll thicken that, may I?
Yeah, look, this is, um, something that doesn't crop up very often under section thirty seven. And it really catches my attention, in fact, when we do have a section thirty seven whereby we are sort of, in a sense, for a number of reasons, under section thirty seven, that is the power of the commission to dispense with certain requirements. And those certain requirements are quite, uh, interesting and they're all obviously listed on page one hundred and twenty. But the key one that I believe is appropriate, having spent a bit of time reading this, and also too, I have spent a few hours with Mr Carr going over the property and knowing that he is, um, really wanting to get on with the job and can further develop. And I'm, I'm hoping that the restaurant and the jetty, et cetera, down the track will come to fruition. And I've said in this place on a number of occasions that I believe that once that is built, that is the restaurant and the jetty and car park, that it will open up that area and provide a valuable service to the community, not only in the tramier, oceanic corridor, but also in the other area of Ropey and beyond. But what I would like to refer to is, um, under section, uh, thirty seven B, uh, although I better read part six first, amending the planning scheme to bring it into conformity with the model planning scheme framework or, and B, the public interest will not be prejudiced. The commission may by notice and writing given to the planning authority dispense with requirements of section thirty eight, thirty nine, fourteen, forty one, which is basically starting the process again to have a amendment, as we would normally have an amendment, go out to consultation and go through those certain processes. Um, and the, um, and given its approval to the draft amendment according to section forty two. So in this case, it is not, I believe, and I think the officers have done a good job in spelling out that it's a minor change, it's not going to impact upon the actual, uh, development per se. And so I, I believe it's appropriate that we take this course of action. And I think it's important to note that section thirty seven is there not to be used willy-nilly, not to be used as a sort of, uh, uh, sort of a template for all and summary. But in the circumstances when there is a deviation or a, a slight adjustment or there is an error in the wording, then in fact, we can proceed and support the recommendation.
Uh, Mr Mayor, I find myself being in complete agreement with Alderman James on every word he's uttered on this motion. And to furthermore say that I think this would be a great, um, a great boost and a great advantage for the area and the wider region. Um, this has been a long and frustrating process for the proponent. This has been a process that would, uh, not necessarily reflect wonderfully on people's opinion of local government as a sector. We've come to the point of an outcome, uh, and, uh, I, I hope for the proponent's sake that finality is reached tonight. Because this has been a very long and, and cumbersome process and costly process when you concentrate on holding costs and, and opportunity costs.
Uh, it has been a, a long and drawn out process. The, the, the situation is, and I don't want to go through it because everybody has, I think, been well briefed on this. But I can only say that having spent countless hours at Ros's place with her planner or ex-professional engineer, and the to-ing and fro-ing that has gone on over the last two years, two years. Back in two thousand and fifteen, that's basically how it started. And this council made a decision at the time, it should refuse it. Then it came back to us with some ended plans and we approved it. Then the, then the, uh, representatives exercised their right to appeal to the tribunal. The tribunal refused it basically on one ground, one, one measure, one condition. So that nevertheless stopped the process and it came back as, as a new development application. Uh, and I'm starting to lose my track here because it's so long-winded. But anyway, the outcome is that the parties have signed the, the agreement. And even though I've been told there is still a couple of things and it's outside the building envelope by a very, very small amount, the roof line has been lowered and that's going to benefit Miss Burgess to a degree. And also the fact of the matter is that, um, all the parties have signed the consent. And therefore it's merely up for us to endorse that because that is what the parties have agreed to. I might add that on, on the actual, um, assessment and relevant background, because I spent a little bit of time going back through this and, and having my own mind, how this thing developed from those early stages. And then I note that down here on the page, um, assessment, the tribunal handed down its decision on the nineteenth of October, two thousand and seventeen. We haven't got there yet. It's the typo. Okay, look, we're not really worried about typos, but at the end of the day, uh, it's, it's not, we're not in two thousand, it's Oc- October, two thousand and sixteen, and refused the proposal. And that's when the actual tribunal made that decision, the nineteenth of October, two thousand and sixteen, not seventeen. Anyway, seek council support.
Thank you, other speakers. Right, five on the floor? So, I'm pleased that we can't integrate all of this, but. Charity announcement, and that's the, this is the planning authority. You know, if you have this many.
A fantastic mayor, and police decision is going out to a consultation and, uh, already what I've seen in the, some of the documents now, it's already, already exciting and I really look forward to this progression further.
It, it nearly missed off the capital works. It was, it was, it was by us a whisker. And it wasn't the, to the general manager, said, I think this should be included in the workshop. That's when it came back on. And I'll tell you what, if it hadn't have been on there, because we deferred this, as you may be aware, from the previous budget, we took, I think, a hundred thousand for the feasibility or for the, um, uh, the consultant's fee to, to look into this. And, uh, and the other nine hundred thousand, correction, the other eight hundred thousand that we did before, I think, down to the, uh, footy club at Lauderdale, I think they got a hype of three hundred grand. And a couple of other places got the, part of the TV there. Anyway, it's back on the agenda, it's been ticked off in the capital works. And in our discussion at the last meeting when we signed off on the budget, I made it quite clear that that was one of the issues that I supported because it was deferred from the previous year until we got a, a, a nice picture of what it was gonna, or where, you know, what's gonna entail the actual project. So I'm pleased it's there and it's, it's, it was Riston Vale's turn to get its share. Richmond's had its share. Lauderdale has, has more than its share. Um, all, Tom Copley and all's had their share. And it was about time that Riston Vale got its share. So I'm pleased that we were going out to consultation because the nine hundred thousand's in the bag and there's no disputing that.
Thank you, uh, thank you indeed, uh, Mr Mayor. Um, we didn't defer this last year, we did not defer this last year. What we did was to say that a unconsentated, uh, virtual, a virtual or gesture signaling of one million dollars to a community, there you go, we've spent one million there, community. Be grateful, off we go, but that wasn't the best way forward, that that wasn't the best interest of the community, that wasn't best bang for rate payer money. So that has been delayed instead of a one million dollar gesture stimulus to a community. We, by, by leaving an extra year, we've come up with an integrated plan, if you like, a ten-year, um, vision or concept. And it's not set in stone. This is the discussion document. We're not going out saying, this is how it's going to be. We're going out saying, we've looked into it, this is a proposal, would it work? Oh, there's some tweaks that, that could, could work better. But, um, the, 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 the value add of a concept like this versus just isolating a specific sporting infrastructure for one specific sport is just so much greater, is so modulated. Um, and, and I think it, if it, if it comes to its fruition, it's, it's going to be transformative for the area. So, um, you know, just to reemphasize, we're not saying this is, this is set in stone, this is the discussion. But, um, look at the benefits of delaying this by one year. Instead of just a, a piece, a, a, a bit of, a one million dollar spend and, and move on, a integrated, uh, long-term, you know, modulated community piece of infrastructure. So, uh, I seek, seek, seek support to go to consultation, I'd be interested to hear what the results are.
Um, Mr Mayor, I just wanted to comment and, and add, um, to Mr Walker's comment in that, um, the timing of this is far better. And I know that, um, Ms Alderman James, that's right, Jane, Jane. Um, it's finding, it's finding something amusing in all this, but I would like to.
Or, or Alderman James, you've had your opportunity, well, it's great. Okay, okay.
Um, I would like to point out that the amount of money that, um, Ms Alderman James referred to have been magnificently utilized in the Lauderdale community. And the fact is that there is a higher attendance, uh, down at that ground. Some of the works that have been undertaken have actually made that facility so much more user-friendly. It is appreciated by the whole community. And I think it, it was, um, showing when we dealt with the budget last year that we actually consider all factors. The fact that this matter has now before us is better timing, um, it's part of a, a bigger look at the whole area. And I think that's far more suitable.
I absolutely agree that Alderman Walker's version of history is a lot more accurate than that.
He has to come in, doesn't he, yes?
I, I, I mean, this, this is, this is not, this is not.
Alderman James, the patients of the chair are wearing thin. Would you please control your interruptions so that other people can have a fair go at the roundtable?
Would you please control your interruptions so that other people can have a fair go at the roundtable?
This is not, this is not just about one facility. This is about a comprehensive plan for services throughout Riston Vale and addressing infrastructure issues throughout Riston Vale. And if you look at pages thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five of the plan, there's a long-running list. There's something that's going to be implemented over quite a long period of time. So, you know, to focus, to focus on sort of one facility and say that that's really what this is about, I think is entirely misleading. It is important that we took the time to get this right, that we're going to consult on it, that we're going to not just get the views from the community, but get some proper planning into understanding what's available, what's needed, you know, from various user groups and actually, you know, have a plan that addresses the community needs, the infrastructure needs, you know, across the entire suburb, rather than just, you know, focusing on one facility. So, you know, I think it's misleading to characterise this as being just about the change rooms and, you know...
Mr. Mayor, I think council should be very pleased with the plan that actually has been done by Ross's planning. It's been a lot of work put into this and a lot of interaction with the community already to date. And I'm sure that other Aldermen will agree with me in terms of, I'm looking forward to actually seeing what consultation responses we get. Bearing in mind that the community has already been involved in getting the plan together to this point. And I feel that with that involvement, there will be a lot of response in relation to this. So I very much...
Yeah, Riston Vale's an area that's had been lacking in council advantage for many years and I think this is a great initiative, good planning, good design, and appropriate community consultation is the way to go with this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Richmond Re-Reserve has been a large tract of land which has caused a number of issues over the past certainly five years. Illegal dumping, people staying there, parked at the back and dumping their refuse of various kinds. So this is really opportune to have a reserve masterplan for it so we can actually do something sensible with the site and make it more attractive and more usable to everybody. I think the, sorry, the information that's come back from the community with the consultation is good and has been well taken into account. Certainly some of the concerns that came out, like with the Rugby Golf and other things, have been well considered in this amended recommendation and I seek the Aldermen's...
Yes, very similar. I'm very pleased with this. The, and looking through it, I find it's really, really very good. Now, I just want to raise something slightly different though. Where the football oval is and especially the amount of games played there, I believe that along the side of the ground, we should have actually had angled parking because to me, a lot of cars are already parking on the grass as well as got limited parking on that side of the oval. And the oval's almost, parking, cars are filling the oval up, which is great. But I believe down in that street, it would have just made it, angled parking would have made for a lot more cars because when we have the fair and stuff like that, people are parking further and further away. And I just thought, it's far enough away where it's not intrusive, but certainly the crowds that get to the Richmond Oval for football games is fantastic.
Question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Graham. Mr. Graham, about three weeks ago, I met with a group of residents in Richmond and we were actually on the Rivulet Coal River. And the discussion was the location of the bins for the disc golf. And discussions varied, but there was a degree of concern about the location of the actual basket. And if you, if you refer to the nice pretty picture in your agenda, you'll see number six, and that's probably one of the standing points. And you'll see a little circle there. Haven't found it yet, Mr. Graham? Okay, well, I'll wait till you get it. Wait till you have it. I've got a colour one, if you've got a black one. But that location is now basically set in concrete, if you want to use that term. And that, it would seem, has been relocated from the property that is on a bus, Gunning Street. Let's hope, let's go back a step. Initially, the bin was almost at the bottom of that cliff or that hill. In this photo, it is actually being relocated elsewhere. Is that right?
Bin relocated.
Well, had it positioned elsewhere other than at the base of that property?
I haven't been directly involved in that sort of detailed, the actual disc court.
Schools.
No, I haven't been involved in that sort of detail because I was meant to be at the actual change room.
Who do we ask? Do I ask the general manager? Who do I find out? Well, I'm saying it's been, it's been moved. I just want confirmation of that because that was the discussion that I had with the seven or eight residents about a month ago. And that was, it was adjacent to that property in Gunning. And I just want to know as to whether or not it has been positioned in accordance with their wishes. That's all.
See council support?
We're then asked to, with some of the members' top plan, call those in favor. Once again, the members to adopt the plan, calling Walker.
Yes. Look, it's been consulted far and wide and I think the end result of this plan is, I value that the recommendations will enhance the amenity, but also perhaps highlight the, this underutilised treasure of recreational space.
Yeah, it's a magnificent walk around there. Sometimes it can be difficult with, if the seepage and water around there. And I commend this recommendation.
Here, I have a question for Mr. Graham, his capacity as the responsible officer on this matter. Mr. Graham, the actual demarcation between what is council land and what is crown land is quite, it's unclear in the actual documents. It does refer to the gravel track and the actual management of the area is under council control. But does that mean that council has management control of the whole area? Or does it mean that there is only council's responsibility for maintaining only a section of that area or part of that area? It's not, it's unclear as to what land is council out there and what land is crown. Could you clarify that, Paul, please? Joint funding that comes into this? Or is it just that council maintains that gravel track? And obviously the recommendation is to do something about the boggyness of that track because of the nature of it being underwater in parts. So perhaps you could clarify that as well, please.
I don't understand that there's any joint funding or that it's council's responsibility to manage the...
Yes, introduce some new material, see if I get shouted down for it. But also just in the whole process, the intrinsic and strong heritage, be it both historical and indigenous, is pretty significant in this area as well. So, you know, support the plan.
Mr. Mayor, look, basically what's being proposed at Bayview Secondary College is along the lines of what council has already done at Clarence High School in terms of development of sporting facilities that can then be for the combined use of the community and the school. They've demonstrated clearly that there is a lot of potential for use. There's a number of sporting groups that are interested in using the facilities. And as far as I'm concerned, this is just one step in the process. It doesn't commit us immediately to spending any money, but I think that it's something we definitely should be embarking on to assist Bayview Secondary College with this development because it would be a great asset for the community down there.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's important that we adopt in principle the support for this memorandum of understanding because the whole basis behind it is for the development of the Rugby area as far as the sporting precinct goes. And the school has already shown massive inroads into its educational pursuits. This is to complement what it is trying to achieve in the community and it's also involving bringing the community in and sharing in the whole school community. I think it's a wonderful way of trying to utilise Department of Education facilities for the benefit of the whole community. And I note very much that this, adopting this in principle makes, at this stage, makes no financial implications at all and that would have to be considered at a later time.
Well, according to the officer's report, it's mutually beneficial. And part B recommends this council, Graham, in principle, as there are some other potential hurdles to be jumped in relation to the crown. So I commend the recommendation to the council.
Mr. Mayor, the council will gain an important final linkage in the Tangara Trail. That's pretty relevant. And additional access to the land that's precinct land. Also, the area of land being sought by the club won't have a material impact on council's planned future development in Seven Mile Beach. I think that's pretty crucial as well, supporting the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was covered quite extensively in the council workshop, but I think the bottom line in embarking on this is that over a period of time, it will be a net savings to council in terms of energy savings that it outstrips the cost of the replacement. All I would say, and I raised this concern that was addressed during our workshop, is that we account for it in such a way that that initial upfront cost doesn't impact on our, you know, recurrental capital budgets. That all depends on how we structure the financing. It could be through internal borrowings, for example. But I just, you know, want to make sure that we structure the financing in a way that the, you know, the saving is spread out over the period and the cost isn't sort of, you know, suddenly seen upfront.
Alderman Hume has said essentially this is a great cost benefit to council over a number of years and we would be perhaps remiss not to do it. See council support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is part of a lot of work that's been done in this area. We can bring in reports about cars in the motorway last week, about the cars becoming a stoker brick and the rough man and work that we're doing along with a number of other partners. Closing these roads at some point in the proceedings will help prevent this situation occurring again. And I think it's an important part of the strategy to clean this area up completely for nice six foot foot.
I'm just interested to know as to whether or not the local residents will in fact abide or respond to this questionnaire or consultation that's being proposed inasmuch as seeking their views on the proposed restricted vehicle access. They come back and say, well, we don't care, you know, or it's a good thing and so on. Why can't we... Why can't we, or do we have to go through a particular process in order to do this? So perhaps the general manager can explain. Given that we have the consultation process, we get their views, et cetera, so on. What happens then? Can council unilaterally say, well, look, we've gone out to consultation, we've only got a piecemeal approach to this. Are we going to go ahead and do this? Or are we going to just sort of say...
A couple of questions, Mr Mayor. So the decision by the Transport Commission, is that something that would be in place until such time as an alternative decision is made or for a particular period? Thank you, Mr Mayor and Mr Graham. I just wanted to also understand that, is it the intention that the access would be opened up as soon as any of these subdivided properties become available for occupancy? And if not, what access?
Just very briefly, Mr Mayor, I can answer Alderman James' question about the consultation. Through One Community Together, we have already done quite a lot of consultation in the community about this. Certainly, the information that's coming back at this stage is that the community is very keen to do something about this. And they see closing these roads until the subdivisions are built as a very important part of that whole process. And I think they will be very supportive of it. And I seek council support.
I have viewed the meeting, a public meeting that was on the 4th of June 2017. And Mayor, you were present, of course. The question is, there are a number of motions that were put to the meeting. And also, Peter Edwards posed a motion as well. What do you propose to do about those motions? Or are you prepared to just let them go by? The next question is in relation to the hotel development and the tape training. The formal process and the lodgment and the determination of the DA has been kicked off. My question is, are there any conditions or approvals required before the developer can proceed with the development? Required in relation to the DA before the developer can proceed? I can't start from word for word, but I'm very confident that there are a number of conditions of the planning application that require various things to be done before any works can commence on the site. Yes, they include things like a development management plan for the better term, issues around drainage and other matters. But we can actually, I can actually... Does that include the transfer of public land?
One question, and it relates to the questions just asked by Alderman James. As you know, I was at the public meeting. And I have a concern that there were a number of statements made at that meeting that are clearly, factually incorrect. And there's obviously a lot of misinformation out in the community. That includes, for example, that the planning scheme only allows a development of two stories, which is clearly not true, as we saw from the report, that the... Okay. Well, I was going to go through the specific examples. But the question is, do you have suggestions of, you know, what we could do to tackle some of the misinformation that's out there?
Yes, to the general manager, I might be selfish, Matt. Where are we at in relation to council considering, consideration of, if that's going to happen, the bike lanes in Clarence Street? Is that likely to come to council in the next year or six months? My second question, it's on the consultation. How widely distributed was the survey that was sent out? And was that only the residents' part, state friends, yacht club down in Shore? Mr Mayor, when can we expect the tree on the major distributions of the 21 Tanunder Street to comply with the key principles and objectives of the council's management of trees? Especially the removal of lower branches up to five, three to five metres in order to give clear pedestrian and traffic access? And so comply with the general manager's comments on page 11 of the agenda?
I find the...